Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:32 and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Oh, I forgot to say, it's Tuesday after the routine. First up is our consent agenda, the minutes from October 4th. Has everyone had a chance to read them and look at them?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of October 4th.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Warrant 23, I've got it over here to sign. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 23.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, East Meadow Antiquated Books.
So there should be a list in your folder of books from the East Meadow Library that the librarian has come in and reviewed and deemed they're outdated or in poor condition, some of that water damage. She tried to get rid of the ones that she could by offering them to people, but like I said, some are outdated or in such poor condition that nobody would want them, so we're just seeking permission to discard those books. And some cassettes and stuff like that.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion just to approve discarding of the antiquated books at East Meadow.
Excellent, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Apparently it's gonna be one of those kinds of days, I guess. All right, next is, oh sure, next we're gonna do New Business. First up is a vote for youth wrestling. Mr. Dubuque, it should be.
I'm looking in.
You had a child last week. Congratulations to him.
Congratulations to him.
Yes, so Kevin O'Neil and Dylan Dubuque are looking for information only, just sharing with you, that they are hoping to build this feeder program along with Belcher Town's rec department for youth wrestling. It's a program that did exist here a few years ago, obviously with COVID, something subsided, but putting the two communities together, offering a couple days a week at a small charge, and just really looking to just feed this into our program, you know, that we have here. It would be open for students in K through 6 because obviously 7 through 12 are eligible for high school sports. It's not governed or sanctioned by the MIA, it's nothing like that, but again, it's at the rec level and just giving more opportunity for students and the younger grades to begin involving themselves in youth wrestling.
I have a question.
Just to be clear, this is not a school-sponsored wrestling team, it's a rec team similar to GAA, but some information, they would like to send some information home through the school, so we wanted to make sure that you all know where.
So I was just wondering why it's not part of GAA.
So they're in conversations about where it will land. So we have two different registration platforms, if it was through GAA or through Belcher Town, so Kyle Tebow, who's the rec director in Belcher Town, is in conversations with Kevin, our varsity coach, who will not be coaching, he'll be participating as a parent, but they will have these conversations on how to proceed.
Okay.
Common though, right, and similar to like football, where they use that one platform for registration, whether it lives with Belcher Town or it lives with Granby, so they'll sort all of those things out, they're in their initial planning stages right now, just wanted to get that information, get ahead of it and get that to you, so nobody is surprised when they start to see youth wrestling flyers going home and posted throughout the community.
Excellent.
I just have a quick question. When we co-op for wrestling for the high school, did we co-op with South Hadley?
Yes, but our partnership with South Hadley, I believe they're gonna start up their own program again. So for a couple years, their numbers were really low, so we agreed to take them on, but as you know, co-ops expire, you can do a one-year or a two-year co-op. So they are starting up their own program again this year.
Okay.
So we'll continue with Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School.
Oh, okay.
That'll be our current co-op. We did have a partnership with Amerisas as well, but didn't have students the last couple years that were interested in participating, so as of right now, it'll just be a two-school co-op for high school.
I guess my only thought with it is at some point, it would be ideal to align whoever we partner with at a youth level, to also follow if we have a co-op, that way some kids who go through the whole program, K to 6, don't get to 7th and then wanna go with, if they are really into that sport, I know that we've had.
Which is what keeps happening.
Some of those conversations with other organizations where we do that, where maybe we co-op at a youth level, connections are built and they feel like they want that through high school, but then we co-op with another team, which is something to kind of think about if we keep aligning with other nearby towns for youth levels. So, that's all.
The challenge is the co-op areas are not as easy as you would think, they would get really difficult. One community needs to be in need, a community who's in need can't solicit another community, so.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Which is why it changes often for different sports.
Got it.
So off-topic question, so if you have to, do we have to re-up on co-ops that we do, 'cause I don't remember.
We do, we reapply for co-ops.
Okay, so we don't vote on those every time?
No.
Okay, I was like, hi, same here, welcome.
Yeah, so usually, like I said, they're good for however it's entered, so a one- or a two-year agreement, and usually the athletic director tracks that. There is a form called like the MIA Approved Co-Ops, it has all of them from every season, where it outlines all of those, but yes, it goes before the PBIZ athletic directors.
So you want a vote on this then? No?
No, I don't think a vote's necessary, it's really for information.
Just really FYI, okay, excellent. Any other questions about the youth wrestling? Excellent. Next is Painting the Dinosaur.
Abby, how are you? Welcome, pleased to see you. Hi.
So my name is Abby Filkmann, I'm a senior over across the street, and I'm here to talk about our project to paint the dinosaur. It really started like last year in a journalism class, and we did some research about the dinosaur and, you know, like why it's there, and we came to the realization that it used to be rainbow and why isn't it rainbow anymore. So we did some research and we found out that somebody had complained about it because it was promoting homosexuality, so they changed it. They didn't really give us much information as like telling us that they were gonna change it and like what was going on, so it just disappeared for a while and then came back and it was like blue and white and red and it just wasn't it. So me and a transgender friend of mine, Haven, we decided that we wanted to paint it back to rainbow or something that shows that we are an inclusive school and that we're not like that. So we started to gather some people together, get people on board, and it started to pick up really quickly, actually. So we had some meetings with GSA about it, Student Advisory, and then we were meeting with Mr. Sullivan a few times a week, or a few times a month. Yeah, the hunt began to really find who was in charge of this and if we could actually do this, and then come to find out we actually own it, or like the schools.
So we said the school committee is responsible for it because the entity that purchased it, which was the school committee originally, has say over how it's designed or such.
So now that it's really in our hands, we wanted to get like a school-wide survey out to see like if people were actually for this, so we created a survey to send out to all students. That was actually sent out Monday. We got like, what, like 40, you said?
43.
43 replies so far. You said most of which were positive, right? So it looks like we do have a pretty big like following behind us, I guess you could say. And we are trying to paint the dinosaur from like November 1st to November 4th before the weather gets cold, so at the end of the week, we'll get all the submissions for the survey, see what everybody thinks. We'll get submissions to see like what people want to do with it and what people think is like best, what will promote inclusivity and show that we are, the school's welcome for everybody. So once we get all that information, we can go forth with painting it, hopefully.
So yeah, so the group came to me a few times, and I know I've met with Ms. Jordan a handful of times as well, and they really focused on how can we create, right, if the dinosaur's gonna be on our front lawn, how does it symbolize things that we as a school, as an organization, believe in, about being welcoming, about being supportive of all students, and those types of things, inclusive as Abby has said. I think Abby and Haven and Brandy, when they came to me, the first time it felt like, I think actually one of their classes had some hand in the original design, there was a contest through North Street or East Meadow originally.
Whose elementary students chose it.
Years and years ago.
I think it was my second grade class.
So yeah, so I think they felt a connection to that and they felt like it symbolized something and then it was gone and it came back and they feel like there's no connection to it.
I'm curious about that part of the, because they all disappeared for a while, didn't they refurbish all of them, like town-wide, I thought?
Every person that purchased one, or every plot of land is their own individual.
But like I remember one used to be yellow with little kids on it, and the one that's right as soon as you enter Granby, that one changed.
That one's not even there anymore.
Right.
But I think that business changed hands.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know several of them got changed, even the one at Granby Green is different than it was. So there was definitely, but I didn't know if it was maintenance or.
It may have been.
I don't, I don't remember.
I don't know.
But I do absolutely remember what, it was a big thing in the news too, about them saying that they didn't like the decoration of it for not having pride, and which I thought was awful too, so, but then I was curious who was in charge of the next painting round of who chose what was on it, which is too bad. I wasn't on the school committee at that time either.
I wasn't either, I don't even know.
I don't know.
Honestly, I can't even say what it looks like right now, which is awful.
Blue and red.
Almost looks like it has a saddle on it, right? Yeah. My kids like noticed it, 'cause they're little, so like we would talk about it all the time, so I do remember them multiple getting removed and repainted and that, but yeah. It's too bad that we, how do we not know this, like that, like who refurbished them and painted them again, and like it's just.
We did get ahold of the person that actually painted them.
This last time, okay.
I don't remember, it was a woman, I don't, I don't know her, but she, Ms. Stapleton knows who she is.
Okay.
Across the street. But for the next, the next painting on it, we sent out some like sheets with a dinosaur on it, so people can like color in what they, what they want, and we can kind of take all the, all of them into account and have the students actually vote on them, so it's not just us saying, oh, we're gonna paint it rainbow again, it's getting everybody's opinion on it.
Love it. Do we know anything about like sealing it, like are we using those professionals that painted it last time to make sure we're gonna do everything that we need to have done so it continues to look good? Don't lie to me, girl.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll take care of it.
Okay.
We'll make sure it's sealed.
I have to say too, and I, right, like I think, I appreciate November 1st as a timeline, but if we wanna do it right and the dinosaur has to stay the winter the way that it is, I think Abby and her supporters like may not love that idea, but also understand that they want it to be done right and last, so you know, highs are in the 50s and lows are in the 30s right now, so we wanna make sure that it's done right, so those are some of the conversations, and I'm sure Ms. Stapleton and some others will provide some guidance.
Are you guys gonna do a fundraiser or something to raise the money for the supplies? Is it, is there, how are you guys gonna pay for it?
We kind of thought about doing a fundraiser, we haven't really put everything together yet, but I think it would mostly be like blowing, fundraising stuff.
Donations or whatever?
Yeah, I think we'll be open.
Okay.
We'll make sure.
Excellent. Any, do we want to vote on this, do we need to vote on this? Yeah?
Technically, according to the email that I received, was that it's the school committee's decision to approve or what they wanna do, and if you want more information or anything like that.
I mean, I would just say, obviously, like what you just said, it's a discretion of whoever is looking at it to make sure it's gonna, you know, be able to be applied and stayed, we'd hate for you guys to paint it and then it not last the winter because it's too cold and it's not the appropriate time, but obviously funding, like you guys are gonna help them and sort that out, then I would absolutely be comfortable moving forward.
Any further questions or comments on that?
No.
I'd love to see, have you come back and let us know what the final designs will be, it doesn't have to be before you paint it, but it would be nice to, you know, see what, how you guys arrived at the, you know, compilation of a bunch of different things and know, and just kind of how it works out. I would love for you guys to come back and let us know where you're at. If there's not any other questions, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to vote to approve Painting the Dinosaur, the students from Granby's junior senior high school.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So next up, we already have recognition of our, recognition of our teachers obtaining professional teacher status, so the way that I think most people recognize this is often referred to as tenure, but desi is defined, teachers in good standing and teachers who have been in a district, employed in a district for three years and are at least proficient on all four standards on the educator evaluation rubric. And we're fortunate to have three educators with us, two teachers and one of our social workers here at East Meadow, here with us tonight. At least one of them, I know you've seen before here, Joe Corchain, completed his third year, and he is, he was here last year presenting the Daily Dyno, the school newspaper. So Joe Corchain is the only one from the junior senior high school receiving professional teacher status for this year, and then Kim Galant and Laurel Parker from East Meadow. Kim Galant is a school social worker and Laurel is one of our sixth grade teachers. So we're very fortunate to have all three of them as a part of our district and wanna recognize them and thank them in a very small token of our appreciation. It happens when you guys leave this to me. Think they're still alive? I asked Adam if I should write in punk music.
I didn't say flowers, I'm saying Jesse for gel.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You don't have to, no pressure.
Well, I just love being a part of Granby Public Schools and I'm just really optimistic for a teacher and just having the time of my life, really, I know that sounds funny, but I'm really enjoying everything going on right now, so, thank you.
I agree, it being such a small community, it's just, everyone's only when I first started working, I'm like, oh, it's gonna be like a big family, and it really has become that, and it's something really special, so, glad to be here for sure.
Yeah. You guys said what I was gonna say. Echo everything they said, I'm loaded here, the small community feels great, getting all the students and staff is great, I'm here until you guys pick me out, so, and I apologize for the earlier disruption, but I think it's a good thing I have a kid who doesn't have it to be in a library.
Thank you all, and we're gonna take a break into subcommittees, I know, so I think they're gonna want some pictures too, so.
Just a minute. So we'll adjourn.
Are we doing visitors' comments though, or?
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
It's after. Well, should we, we can do it.
It's actually not even on the agenda that I'm seeing.
We have to, we have to subcommittee.
We have one other, the physical therapist thing, and then.
Yeah.
We can do the new business, and then do, we wanna do the new business, the budget transfer, we've got people. So we're gonna move ahead to the new business, the budget transfer, the physical therapist salary savings.
Yeah, so this is a position that we have in the budget that we haven't filled yet, so we're using some of those savings to transfer into contractual services, that we're gonna use that money to service the students that this physical therapist position would have serviced. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, we're trying our best to keep you guys up to date on all this, and we haven't done a great job of it in the past, so we're focusing on it this year, that you guys approve transfers like this, so that's just.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfer for the physical therapist salary savings.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in as administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee, the visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone who is unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. You can have a seat on that end right there.
I might jump in the gun, but I wanted to learn more about what's going on in Section 5, the school capacity.
Okay.
So I was kind of expecting to speak at that point, that's why.
So the way that it works is we don't interact during, because it's a regular business meeting.
Sure.
So you could make a statement to us if you have concerns or comments regarding the school capacity. If we have clarifying questions on your statement, we may engage with you, but typically you get your three minutes to address us, there's not really any back and forth. I can tell you, and I don't mean this to sound flippant, that we've been talking at great length about this since probably 2020, so you could go back and watch, a lot of our old meetings are all up on YouTube.
And on the website.
And on our website, so you can get a lot of the background information, and our minutes also have a lot of our discussion points.
Sure.
Because we can't, because it's an open meeting and we have Robert's rule of order, we can't engage in back and forth questions unless it's a public forum.
Okay, so then I can just give you the little bit that I got on it.
Yep.
So I know that the nice new school got small quick, right? So we're looking to find some new space for the preschool, and that would be to possibly move the sixth graders to the high school. So, and as you said, I haven't seen all the previous meetings, but would it be a possibility to do it the other way around, put the preschool at the high school and leave this school as it is? My thought with that, putting a sixth grader in the high school would be kind of, they'd be close in age, obviously, right? So there'd be a more, a bigger chance of getting influence, but if you had that drastic difference in age, it would be more like a big brother, a big sister to the preschool there versus possibly being influenced by somebody older.
So I will tell you, I'm sort of gonna break, we had a vote on this about three and a half years ago, I think, and has it been on?
Longer?
It could have been.
Probably two and a half.
Maybe two and a half?
Because it was before I was here, it was that last vote, and this will be three.
You're up and down, right?
Yeah.
So around three years ago, and we had probably about six months worth of meetings, we had focus groups and all of that, and there's quite a lot of extensive information that's out there on our website. We just had a school capacity work group, early part of 2022, and they presented in February or so to us, and a lot of that information is addressed, if you can go back through and look, and there's really a large expense associated with moving the preschool, which was one of the options that I had actually inquired about at that point, because you need bathrooms in the rooms, the smaller sinks, the lower potties, like, so we have really looked at a lot of those different things. So I would suggest, again, not trying to be rude or push off, that if you do a little bit of research from our website, and there's links, you can send me an email and I can help send you a link and point you in the right direction, that a lot of that information is out there.
Sure.
And we welcome you to come, you're welcome to stay and listen to our discussion that we'll be having after our work groups later this evening, and so you can kind of get some of that other information.
And I'm also happy to set up a time to meet with you or take a call and answer any questions I can or provide information that I have from the school capacity work group or anything that we posted publicly, I'm happy to share with you, but obviously feel free to reach out, happy to talk through.
And I'm sure this is out there already, but what's, what's the benefit like to the town to make the daycare, like from a financial, I get it, like it's a great benefit to have your fourth grader, or your four-year-old be able to get into preschool, but from a financial standpoint, is there a benefit to the town?
Well, you get Chapter 70 money, they're built into the Chapter 70 formula, which is the state formula and how schools are funded, both from the state and from the municipality, so there's that, and then, you know, there's a lot of research about the benefits of having pre-K, because if you don't offer pre-K, they say you start getting turned upside down in special ed referrals and things like that, students start to fall behind, so there's some research behind that as well.
But would the, would the state give more money for pre-3, pre-3 and pre-4? Do they actually reimburse us, like they do K to 12?
Right now, we have a half-day pre-K program, so it's based on that, so we get funded through the students who come in, but you don't get as much because it's a half, currently a half-day program. So we do currently offer pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, we have three half-day sessions this year.
That's all I got.
Do you, so my name is Jennifer Bartos, and my email should be linked from the website, but it's, I think it's J. Bartos, right? I know it really well, J. Bartos at Granbyschoolsma.net. Yeah, I always forget the M.A., I wanna do Granby Schools. So I sound like I know what I'm talking about, right? I apologize, but send me an email and I can send you some links if you have, if you want some of that further information, just let me know what you want.
So does this look like it's something that is gonna happen next year, or is it still up in the air?
We're gonna be talking about that a little bit later on.
All right, I'll stay tuned.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I'm glad he came out, and I say that too, like I'm glad you're here, I'm glad that people are asking questions and getting involved.
It's nice to see, we're glad to.
Yes.
We don't like to just be talking heads.
Yes.
And there's no other name on here, but did you want to extend? Okay. Okay, with that, it's 7:01, we'll adjourn to work groups, do you wanna do to 7:40 or go right to 7:30? That?
Do you have a lot to get through?
Well, we have two.
I just have a question for Audrey with policy, more just to check on one of them.
And I wanted to check in with them, I think it should be fairly ready too.
Yeah, 7:30? Yeah, I think.
Evaluation or group.
Yeah, I think 7:30 will, we can make that work.
And then budget and finance, do we have a lot to go over? So why don't we check in at 7:30, if we need to extend it, we'll do it.
And George, you can just pick if you wanna go, with them or with us, or both.
You guys are gonna do goals and evaluation and policy, and we'll do budget and finance. All right, we will do that, but we're gonna take some pictures. Okay, so we just broke out, came back from our work group meetings, goals and evaluation.
So we did a little bit with policy, there was an update, a potential update for mask policy KCD, which was more around gifts to schools, public gifts to schools. And so Stephen offered to just check in around draft versus update. And it is kind of cross-reference with policy DED, which we did just kind of update more recently. So we're just gonna do a little bit more checking on that before any next steps. And then with the evaluation for Stephen.
So Stephen had put in his report too, that, or in an email, about having the same focus indicators as last year. We feel that that's okay, as long as the rest of the committee feels that that's okay. We were also talking, Stephen, after you left, about needing to open a new document of that superintendent end-of-cycle review form. And last year, you had gone through and highlighted and checked off all the focus indicators. So we need to make sure we open a fresh document, and I believe it might have been Jackie that had done that, or you had done that and made sure that was all done.
That it's public facing?
Not yet.
Doesn't have to be yet, but just, just a fresh document that we'll start using for this year. So I'm gonna go into the folder and probably add in a new year cycle, and then we can house it there.
I think I've already created the evidence folder. I've already put a couple of things in there.
Perfect.
And I just did it within the folder that we had last year.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. And then we talked about the school committee goals as well. And a couple, I just changed my screen, a couple of things that we had talked about. We're just keeping, potentially trying to keep just two goals. Making sure that we were able to kind of try to really meet those. And then that third goal, that really was focusing on the strategic plan and providing feedback to it. And the capital improvement plan, kind of the same thing. Kind of thinking about the fact that that's kind of our role and purpose anyway. And so just leaving that as what we would do as part of the responsibilities of just being a school committee member. And thinking about the other two goals as kind of additional areas to really focus on and making sure that we were kind of adding to and being intentional about. So the first one was still focusing on updating that handbook and just noting any processes for onboarding new school committee members. And so we talked about having a subcommittee to kind of update and review that handbook, just to make sure everything in there is up to date and it makes sense with what we're looking for currently. And then going through any potential changes or continuing processes for onboarding new members. So those two kind of actionable steps attached to that goal. And then the second goal was about that exploring opportunities for potential training and development of current school committee members. And so the two steps that we attach to that goal would be just creating a folder designated for, designated for training professional development resources. And then having each member researching and adding information and just noting at least one resource to the folder for potential opportunities. So basically, creating the folder this year and then having each one of us be responsible for adding at least one that we thought might be helpful for ourselves or others into that folder. So that then, as like a next step, we could potentially see what that looks like for, you know, upcoming years. We felt like those would be kind of manageable and very clear and specific things.
They are written out and we have already shared them with you. If you search in your drive for school committee goals, it'll pop up that it was created by me, twenty-two, twenty-three. Trying to see where I housed it. I didn't give it a specific home yet, which I don't like.
Any other questions or comments?
So if we decide that these are the goals we wanna go with, we should probably put this on our next agenda.
Yeah.
To vote on, like, whether or not we wanna just keep the top two, or if we wanna keep all three. Do we wanna, we need to probably decide that and put that on the agenda for our next meeting.
All right, so we'll have vote for school committee goals for next time, which is when?
Number first.
Do we need to vote on superintendent goals? We already did that, right?
Yes.
Do we need a vote for policy, or you guys, we still have more discussion?
It still has a draft, so Stephen's gonna reach out to Kimberly before we move forward on that one.
All right, anything else?
No, I think depending on what we do with the goals, it will just then decide if we need to talk about that other subcommittee piece.
Sure.
So that'll just be that next step, if we do that.
If Jackie wants to access that, she is shared with it as well, Stephen, if she needs to put it into the folder.
The rules?
Correct. She's listed on it as well.
Okay, budget and finance, we had put this on originally because we thought we were going to have our joint committee meeting, which got canceled for a number of reasons. So we're gonna wait until probably next week, since there is some sickness on, on that side, give the person a chance to recover. And then if we don't hear anything by next week, I'll reach out again and see if we can try to reschedule. Although in the note we got, Kathy Leonard did say that they would be reaching back out, but we'll just follow up. So that was what we thought we were going to be talking about initially, but we did have some good conversation. One of the things that we were talking about is that it's been, you know, we do have those two capital improvements that were approved by the town with that subcommittee, I'll call it caveat. But it's been six months, we don't really have anything. So what I'm wondering is, as we're getting ready to build the budget, do we start to build in some contingency plans with, you know, financial impact around them? And then, you know, just sort of what that means, what it looks like, you know, is, is that really how we want to spend money? You know, at the, if we need, say, fifty thousand dollars as a contingency plan because of whatever, is it, do we, is it worth potentially having to make another more substantial cut? So just kind of.
Is that like a question, though, that we would refer to Chris Martin to ask him? Like, because that's, like, a boiler goes.
Well, that's what I was talking about, is say, say, okay, the, a boiler goes, and it's the middle of winter. We don't wanna just not have school, like, is there a place that we can go to send the kids to, for classes? You know, is there a rental fee that's then associated with it, you know? So just kind of like thinking about some of, some of that, like, how does that work? And, you know, there, we've had the conversations with Chris about unanticipated expenses and that, that would be one. Like, no one plans on their boilers to blow up, right?
And it may not happen at all, but it's better to plan for the worst and hope for the best.
I would hate for it to feel as a shock or a surprise to us, something happens and we don't know where the kids are going. They're losing learning time, you know, and to me, it just feels like we've had enough disruption with the COVID stuff. You know, do we, do we need to have it be that our plan is to go remote? Like, what, what is our plan, you know?
I don't know if we can even have that, that's an option.
What is our contingency plan and what is the financial impact of some of these contingency plans? I just feel like it makes sense to have some of that. So we were talking about that. And like Adam was saying, you know, we have, we really are in a good place with Chris Martin and we've been working really well with him. So just having, continuing to have those kinds of conversations with him and see if maybe if he even has ideas or thoughts on some of that too. Like, you know, how would he want us to handle some of those things, or, you know? Because we don't wanna, to me, and this is totally me, I didn't even say this, but as we're talking to the group, I hate to feel unprepared. And I don't want, you know, knowing the age of the boilers, knowing that they're, what, how old are they?
Sixty-five-ish.
It's in the document, they're the age of the school, aren't they?
Sixty, sixty-plus years old, right, years old. It feels to me like when they were thirty years old, we probably should have started talking about, like, what do we do in case of? So, and to me, I just wanna know, as we're getting ready to build the budget, is this something that we should be thinking about? You know, do we need to reserve, you know, some X amount of dollars as a contingency plan that we, you know, we have to hold firm on? So we have it.
So, I'm trying to remember, go ahead, keep going, because now I have to.
Now we're making circles a bit, so.
My question.
I think I'm really sort of, that's essentially how the conversation went, is, you know, we're at the beginning of the budget process for twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. And, you know, do we, we wanna make our budget goals, but it's hard to, for me, and for Stephanie too, I'm gonna speak for you, it's hard to make what those goals are, what we want it to look like, when we don't know, you know, we have these two capital improvements that we thought maybe we're gonna have some forward progress on. So it's hard to sit and be like, of course, we're always, the educational piece is always there, but, you know, there's always projects and things that we're looking at, so.
I, I think that's the piece too, like, it's just, you know, I think, I think you, you've, it feels like you think, you plan ahead, you try to use all the information you have. And then, you know, things get approved or passed, and you're trying to kind of work within the parameters that you're given. But then somehow it might change slightly or have this other kind of flavor or piece to it that may have, be a little different. And so then you're trying to kind of plan around it, or plan in spite of it, or try to do some guesswork. So with those, those two capital improvement pieces that were approved but are still kind of out in limbo, and like, what is that doing for next steps? And then like, how should we plan, or how should we budget? And what does that do for going, for us going forward? Like, if we're trying to be thoughtful, if we're trying to be intentional, if we're trying to be fiscally responsible, like, in doing all of those things, we need to kind of know exactly where we stand on all of those pieces. And it's hard when it's, it's not always clear.
It's not cut and dry.
Yeah.
There's, there's so many variables. So it, you know, as we're looking to do that, like, get ready for the next iteration of the budget, there's the things that we always want to bring forward, the things that we've been, you know, we've talked about and, and, but I feel like right now, we can't really make any of those true distinctions until we know sort of where we are with some of that other stuff.
I guess this is probably like a ridiculous question, but I'll go for it. When we're getting all of our funding, and obviously the town gives us some, like, is there, like you say, plan for the boilers thirty years ago? Like, are we supposed to be squirreling away an amount of money to do repairs to the building? Or is the school's building the responsibility of the town? Because as it is, we all know that the funding that is given per student is not even enough money to educate students.
In today's world.
Do you know what I mean? So like, how does that, because I feel like that's gonna be a sticking point, that some people are like, again, like, why don't you budget your money? But like, the way that we are given money, is my understanding, is it, is to educate students, not to maintain the building that your students are in necessarily?
So, it's educate students, yes, but maintaining the building?
Right, but then when you get to a certain point of building.
And they have a maintenance department, they can address repairs that they can adjust. But there's certain things that like fall outside of the scope that.
Agreed.
Could be an unanticipated expense where we could request funding from a reserve account through finance committee or could go to a special town meeting, depend on, depending on what it is.
And again, we're dealing with problems that should have been dealt with many moons ago.
Kind of alluding to before, her and I were going back and forth and saying, like, she's like, is it really an unanticipated expense if the boiler goes? And I said, well, yeah, by that definition, yeah, probably not, having a sixty-five-year-old boiler. But we also can't budget five hundred thousand dollars in our budget in case the boiler goes.
Right, that's kind of like my point, is like, there's not.
Right, we're just, yeah, but, you know, and that's sort of where I was going, it's like, do we, do we, as we're getting ready to talk, do we start to make, like, we are responsible for maintaining our, our building within, you know, like, I'll say, within reason? Or within some parameters?
Regular wear and tear.
You know, so we've been properly maintaining the boilers, we've properly maintained, you know, the, the school, the, the things that are within our control. But then, you know, so we have those capital expenditures that we go for, forward to do bigger things. Like, we had the roof done, we've had, we've gotten grants for doors and different things. So I, I just think, from my perspective, is knowing what we know, I feel like we need to sort of start to look at, what do we do? Like, what is our, what is our in case of emergency plan? Because if there's a, a financial impact associated with that plan, then it becomes part of our responsibility. It's ultimately up to the district leadership, who they're going to reach out to and who they're going to talk to and how it's going to work and all of that. But if there's any money associated with it, it belongs in our budget, which becomes part of our, our thing. Like, I don't, I'm not saying we're gonna reach out and be like, okay, wherever, we're, you know, we're coming in, HCC, we're coming in hot for, for classes or Mount Holyoke or, you know, wherever. But what did that look like? Is there a, a cost associated with it? Like, what do we need to do for a contingency plan? What does it look like? And if it, and it feels to me like there's gonna be some kind of a budget implication. So should we sort of flush it out as one of our goals to what it looks like?
It makes me think back, Palmer was at the high school that had a fire a couple of years ago, maybe even longer than a couple. And they had to close down for two, three weeks while they repaired and all of that. Like, they probably didn't have a plan in place because you don't expect it to happen, you know, and they had to.
Well, that's actually an exception, like, that would follow under a plan that we would have, but this wouldn't be the same, right? Adam, we kinda talked about that, that's a, we have.
Well, I'm talking about like, where would we educate students? Where would we, you know, pick up instruction?
I think what Stephanie is referring to, does it go through a reunification event? But you're going for an extended, like, two to three period, that's not a part of our emergency operation plan.
But it sounds like, is that what you're aiming towards that you think that we should have?
Like, to me, that's part of the plan, when there becomes a fiscal impact, then becomes part of what we oversee. Like, I don't, I'm not asking to, for us to come up with the details, but I think we need to say, we'd like to make sure that we have, like, our contingency fund that's part of the budget to be able to cover some of these, these things that are, I feel like, live, not everything can be an unanticipated expense, right?
Like, I think the hard thing is to build a reserve, so to speak, for that type of thing. Unfortunately, we operate, you know, penny to penny, like, and we do a great job, thanks to leadership team and everyone doing that. If we, even if we did have an earmarked number, I think we all know come budget season, it'd be the first thing that we'd eliminate because it's not, what's gonna directly impact students. So I also wanna be mindful of the time, like, we should have a plan, but when we're talking nitty-gritty, I don't think that we could call another building and say, hey, like, what would it be to rent this space for X amount of time? Because that's gonna change even this month to next month to the following. I think it's kind of a sticky wicket, so we almost wanna like, in my opinion, just focus on getting those details from the town. That's what we were supposed to have that meeting for, and then see, there's, how to kind of proceed. Because I think some of it, if we had the money to do it and have an extra savings, it'd be ideal, but I just don't think that.
Well, and like, other districts, that would be their school choice money.
Sorry, no, no.
Sorry, no, no, right. So, that was just sort of like the.
I feel you, like a hundred percent, I feel you, but I'm.
Budget discussion and, and we had, the only reason we had originally planned that is we thought we were going to have. A bunch of details to go over after our other ones, so we used the time, I think beneficially, to sort of talk about some of these other things that have been swirling around. But with that, if there's no other questions, I think we can start to move on.
I think it's something in the hall.
It sounded like it was above us, right? Okay, um. All right, so we did the work groups and we've done the leaders comment, all right, uh, school capacity. Um, so. Last time, we had some really, I, I think really, really positive and. Great conversation, like I think we're, again, I'm going to thank everybody on the committee for. Um, being able to have really great conversation because this is such a, I'll say, tenuous sort of discussion. Because like I think it was Jill that said it last time is, if there wasn't any answer, we'd be there already, right? So here we are, I'm, um, and also I just want to sort of say that. I know I heard from a couple of different people that, that were, were very popular on Facebook again, um, and. I think we, this has been on almost every agenda since twenty twenty, so.
In the exact wording, school capacity.
In some way, or sometimes it's enrollment dash or whatever.
Yeah, we've definitely redipped into it since the school year started though, because I was like, we need to make sure we're talking about this actively again. I feel like we've had a couple of really good discussions that have already passed, so I'm really hoping that people have tuned in to watch those. Because I mean, what, what was it, one, an hour we chatted about it at one night?
Yep, so I just, you know, um, I want to make sure that if people have particular questions. Email us, um, email Stephen, make an appointment, you know. He's sort of, for you over there, Brian, like we can't engage with people in meetings. But, you know, we want to make sure that if there's, that people don't have lingering questions. And we're, we still, we're very much working on a decision, but there's been no decision made yet. I don't want anyone to feel like we're. Being sly or anything.
So my follow up to that though is Stephen had presented the last time, kind of our up, last questions. Was there any updated questions that anybody posed or any updated comments?
I'm going to actually go into that folder from last meeting and just look at that. So, I don't know, really. I, I just don't know where we're at and what to say, I know that there's a lot more to talk about it, but I don't know. I don't know if I'm the person to drive the conversation, like I don't really know where we want to go, um, from here, like how.
I feel the same, because I feel like we've talked about it a lot, obviously I've been a. In it to win it, thanks again, Stephen, um, for a while now too. You know, both outside of the committee, the first round and now inside the committee and the other committee in the committee. But at the same time, I feel like it's this point of like, we don't want to make it look like we're making decisions. Sneakily or that we haven't been discussing it, but then when you hear that things are blowing up again on Facebook, you know, have you been watching our meetings? You know, have, have we been engaging, have we, people been reaching out to you, Stephen, I think I addressed that last meeting too. Because this is not something that any of us are taking lately either, it's not something that any of us like the options. Because, you know, I was one of the first time around people that was at the microphone, having my own opinions and sharings and, and speaking up, which is. Why I ended up in this lovely seat, um, too. It's delightful.
But at the same time, what other questions, like moving forward, we, so just a real quick. There was a capacity subcommittee forum, just for people who are viewing it now or that, you know, might have seen that it was back on the agenda, it's wasn't a continuing business. But we had the capacity committee that was made up of members of this committee, the leadership team, teachers, parents, community members. They met and did extensive amounts of work, um, we've reviewed that, we asked months and months worth of questions. We asked Stephen many questions, he presented, how many more questions?
There was additional walkthroughs.
Or, yeah, we had additional, even recently walkthroughs, um, at the high school and at East Meadow. Not to beat a dead horse, we do not want to make a quick decision, but I personally feel like this isn't anything but quick. It's been talked about at every single meeting, in the meeting, outside and did one-on-one with Stephen, with, you know, these committees. So if we have any other questions, I think that was already asked, if we had reached out to Stephen, but. Kind of, we're at a point where I think that we do need to be talking, what's.
What is the next step?
What's the next step, we have the information.
So we have had talked about from almost, I'll say, the beginning of the school year, we're coming up on November and that was sort of our. I felt like that was our stopgap, that we wanted to make a decision by November. So our next meeting is November first. Do we want to put on the agenda for November first to have?
Final discussion and vote?
Well, or would this, yeah.
Because I know at our last one, we had talked about, do we want to re-survey people, do we want to refocus group people? And I just feel like we can do. We can reach out to people again and honestly. What, whatever, ever, everyone decides, but. I don't think the information that we're going to get, we're going to have several people that are a hundred percent for it. And a hundred percent, you know, a ton of people that are a hundred percent against it.
Feeding the great divide.
So, I, I, I don't want people to think that we're not being transparent. But at the same time, the five of us in these seats have been, we've been really talking about this for a while. So I feel comfortable in my heart of hearts that. We don't need to go back out, but I, that doesn't mean that I think that the decision is going to be any easier, like I don't. I'm still torn about however I want to, whatever I want to do.
Hundred percent.
So, um. With that, do we want to do November one, have a vote? Final discussion and then a vote?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we took the. I think we took this meeting as an opportunity to have any further discussions. Give time between when, you know, the presentation happened and digest that information even further after that discussion. In case there were any other questions that kind of arose for anybody. Um, so we had a chance to ask them and then come back again today and have a continued discussion if we needed to like have that space, have that time, have that opportunity. For me, I just keep kind of rolling through those slides again, I keep kind of thinking about the, you know, the two different options of, you know, if sixth grade moves, if sixth grade stays. You know, and the impact of both, which is, you know, obviously what that whole discussion about, was about previously and kind of has been. Since we've, you know, made those, um, choices kind of earlier on this year and so. Um, I, you know, I. I, I think it, we kind of need to get to that endpoint.
So if, if we go with November first as a vote. Is there, this is it, this is our last opportunity for discussions, do you guys want to take five minutes, scroll through the slides? See if there's anything else that you have, any last minute, not last minute, because we will have a chance to do that, um, on the first. But just like glancing at it, if there's anything that you, um.
I want to be clear, did the slides and everything end up online too, for families to access?
I believe so, but.
I'm not sure I understand. I definitely don't understand, that's the weirdest thing, that's never happened to me before. I'm not sure I understand, Amy, my sister. While Stephen's looking for that, is there any other, I mean, we had so many questions off of these slides. And again, thank you, Stephen, for, you and your leadership team for putting them together and all of the questions that we had. Is there anything that anyone has any further questions on? We, I'm just going to reiterate because I can't remember the final answer. We talked to Chartwells and they said that they were comfortable with moving, that they could make it work for.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's really one of my, um. Again, it goes back to our capital expenditure thing, you know, like, um. That's one that I'm, I am worried about.
So I'm going to. Uh, you're on the same page as I am, no.
I changed it.
But, ask?
It's not an ask, it's a p.
The last slide.
Last slide. This is the page that I keep turning to this time around of, is it really necessary this year?
Well, I think I spoke to that quite a bit last meeting too, is do we really need for the immediate future two classrooms or one? Because those are very different. Is there space within the building right now to move one room into another space to repurpose and gain one full-size classroom? And is that what we need? Or do we need the two immediately? Because I think that's a huge thing that we talked about, do we keep K right now is two? Do we keep that, the two kind of nest egg, so to speak, like we did with the current sixth grade? And then if we need one room. I'd be quite comfortable right now telling you where I stand in that aspect, but I think that's.
And again, the problem still for that, for me, is like then it's always that looming lingering decision, is it going to be this year? Is it going to be next year? Like, which I don't love, because obviously in just two years' times kindergarten. Which on paper kindergarten gets large in two years, but it could be sooner, you know, you definitely have that piece of. People that don't fill out the census, people that are unaccounted for, because you can't predict the future of moves and things like that.
Where, where when we talk about this, when we were talking about the classrooms. If we maintain with just finding the one classroom, that doesn't account for anybody moving in. That doesn't account for any additional resident growth, because we've already limited our school choice. And we've based our decisions in school choice based on these projections, projections. But as we're seeing this year, people are moving into town. So, I, that's where it's like.
Right, but I feel like I need to address that that page is going to be a sticking point, I'm all about playing the devil's advocate side of anything, so.
And that's where we, that's where honestly where we all get hung up, is because I can be a hundred percent one way and then play devil's advocate and I'm like, oh, I hadn't.
Right, well, and so the flip side for me though is what is a better choice for our sixth graders? Because that's been a whole piece too, that they're not accessing things in curriculum that they could potentially be accessing if they were at. Where we have some programming that would be available to them, um, or, you know. That true middle school piece of, of how that would work together. We've even talked about, you know, exposure to older kids, well, having your sixth grader, or a kindergartner, excuse me, which I have. Being exposed to the antics on the bus with sixth graders. As we've already seen, the bus had to get pulled over one day so they could talk to kids and rearrange seats. Versus if my sixth grader were on the bus, chances are she's not on the bus with an eleventh or a twelfth grader, because those kids have cars already, you know, so. Right down the middle.
I can answer one question right now, I can't find, the video's up from October fourth, but the documents, I don't know why when I click on the minutes, it takes me to my. Real share, which is like behind the scene website login, so the video's there, but I don't know about the, the documents.
That stuff needs to be available before we can be like, oh, we're going to make a vote.
Was, but I don't know why I can't access it, so.
Yeah.
And so to play devil's advocate again.
Totally, do it, because that's what I do all day long.
The sixth grade issue is a bigger issue to me, is if the sixth grade is not getting curriculum that's challenging or doing stuff. That in and of itself is an issue that should have, like.
Absolutely.
How do we not know this, right?
Well, and I'm not saying it's not challenging enough, I mean.
But like, but how, how, it's, like that shouldn't be a reason why we want to move the sixth grade.
That actually bothers me, like I, when I heard that as one of the like selling points to it, so to speak, like two years ago, I was like, well, wait a minute. Like if they stay here forever, I should never doubt that they're not getting the curriculum and the education that they deserve in this building, that really bothered me.
Agreed.
And I was like, I don't even want to look at that as a plus side to moving, because we need to make sure that that's happening regardless of where anyone is personally. Um, and as far as like collaborating with the seventh and eighth, I really do think that if we came together and said like, PD, that they need to be able to.
Well, it's their schedule, is the day start and end is different.
Do we need two subs for however long on a half day, like, those are things that I think, again, like I don't want to be using that as like the, one of the big ticket. Things, because I think it, that's priority regardless of what classroom they're in that they're, everyone's getting.
Building, right.
Correct, appropriate education.
But I do think it's, it's in, in terms of its word choice too, and a little bit of semantics. Because.
Explain, please.
In terms of curriculum.
Okay.
Because I do think there's an argument to be made that sixth graders are getting everything they need regardless of location. But I think it looks different and there's a different feel to it and there's a different flavor and level of, um. Level of exposure to different materials and, and options depending on where they might be. And I think there's not much you're going to do about that. It, that will, that will depend on location, because it will depend on what students have access to in terms of instructional. Um, staff in front of them, it'll depend on instructional resources that they're using. And, and that's just kind of the, the way it is and you can tell people to walk across the parking lot, but it's not going to change what's in front of them kind of on a day-to-day basis. And, and that doesn't mean that it's better or worse, it's just going to look different.
Okay, I feel like that's a better explanation, but I don't feel like that that's how. I necessarily understood it to be ruled out, so.
Well, and I think for some students, maybe it looks better one way, and then for others, maybe it looks better the, the other way, you know what I mean? Every student's like an individual, um. But I, I just. I can see how many students would feel excited to want to like get to that next level that they're feeling like other older students are doing and seeing and accessing. Um, and I can see where as like an elementary model, it would look and feel very different as opposed to that middle or high school model. Because there's, there's a difference, there's just, there, it just is.
So I'm still, I guess, with that, when you say middle school model.
Well, block scheduling versus, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I think like the, I think the setup of the day, I think what teachers are using in terms of the, the resources, like and. You know, you do, you see it here even in terms of like a student's schedule, right? So, you know, they change here at eight, you know, or ten fifteen, and then they do this from ten fifteen to eleven twenty-five. And then they might have special from eleven twenty-five to whatever, and then they do lunch and they do, which it's very different. When you have like, this is my schedule for this quarter, and then it might look different the next day, and then it might look different the next quarter, and then it might look. So even that in and of itself could be a strength for some students and something that they're interested in, and then it might not be always. As exciting or as interesting to other students, I mean. But I just think it's, overall, my point to this whole conversation was I don't think. The word choice in terms of curriculum might be better here versus there, I don't think is always the best way to express that idea.
I appreciate that.
But I do think there are some differences and I don't think it's as easy as like just get people together and tell them to get on the same page and teach the same things. And it's no big deal either, I don't think that's an easy answer either.
And I think two part of it is. Licenseur here is like general, right, it's generalist versus content specific. So they have a swim coach, not a stroke coach, next door they have stroke coaches, here they have swim coaches. So if your best stroke is the backstroke or freestyle. Then you have a coach here, but next door you might have a back coach, backstroke coach, a free stroke, freestyle coach. Because they're specialized in those content areas, they're licensed in those content areas.
The one thing, you just made me think of it, when we've talked about this. Are we saying then that we're going to go to a, a true middle school model, six, seven and eight? six, seven, and eight, or were we just gonna kind of fold in the sixth graders? Because the seventh and eighth graders already sort of have their choices built up. Like, I don't wanna take, like, I don't want it to be a negative for the kids that are already there if we move in. Like, I don't wanna pull down kids, and that's, so that's another thing that I've sort of got swirling around in my head, you know?
So you're talking about like eighth grades' opportunities to access ninth grade classes and such?
Yeah, like if we, if we move over and become a middle school model for six, seven, and eight, what we have, again, though, it's those opportunities, there's kids in the eighth grade that are taking freshman math and are, are being, being, um, allowed to be able to excel, but if we sort of turn in, for lack of a better word, I don't even know if I'm explaining what I'm-
Well, you're talking about the segregation, I remember that being discussed the first time around, I don't recall that being discussed this time around.
If we go middle school model, that's six, seven, and eight, then are the kids that are able to get into the high school classes now, does that go away for them? Because now they're gonna be part of that middle school model.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't take opportunities away, a new grade, and like, that's how the schedule that was presented allows, so the sixth grade schedule, if they were to move next door, would look similar to the seventh and eighth grade schedule as it currently does.
So would a sixth grader be able to take classes with seventh and eighth grade? Or would it be sixth grade pretty much and then seventh and eighth grader mingles? Like, what is, that, I guess that's a lingering question.
Uh, yeah, I don't know, per se, like, maybe in specials, there could be some crossover in like the Z class or something, but I would expect their core classes would be six, seven, eight, and then some degreeers taking.
Because there are classes that are seventh and eighth grade now.
Electives, I think, yep.
So then here's just a really basic question, what differentiates a middle school model to a high school model for a schedule? Does the current seventh, seventh and eighth grade have a different schedule than nine through twelve?
Um, they're on the same, they're on the same bell schedule.
But I just wanted to say like-
They have different electives, they, they choose from different classes.
Right, so-
More choice, the further you get along in high school, but-
So to specify, when we're saying the sixth grade that they'd get more six, seven, eight model, a middle school model, we're really talking about their course selection.
Yes.
Not necessarily their day schedule.
Their day schedule would look, the sixth grade's schedule would look more like seventh and eighth grade currently does than what sixth grade currently does.
That'd be like the, what you were saying, where-
Both.
Yes.
So, like, the sixth grade would be on the bell schedule that seven through twelve is currently on.
I, I get that, I really just wanted that to be-
There'd be a lot more-
I'm not sure that middle schools, typical middle school, whatever, is really that different than high school.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so then devil's advocate, why are we keep saying middle school? Like, what's the difference? I guess that's what I'm saying.
I was using it like as a slash, middle slash high school model, like, meaning primary, secondary.
I just don't want, if anyone's listening, like, are they gonna think that six, seven, eight are gonna have a different schedule than nine through twelve? Like, their bell schedule's the same.
Same, like, this year there's some, like, they have a separate break time.
But that's just a, that, that's just-
That's just how it works out in their schedule, right?
You know, like, uh, because you can't have everybody all hanging out in the cafeteria at the same time, and so it would be, there might be three breaks if there's additional kids over, you know, instead of it, I think it's like nine, ten, and ten, ten, or something like that, maybe it's like, you know, nine oh five.
But now, is nine through twelve moving towards the four-block schedule? And is that something that-
Well, regardless of what we do for that schedule, that, this, whoever's in that building would follow along, like, you know, because the bells, you don't wanna have the bells interrupting.
There is, historically, not in the last five years, but there was a time where the seventh and eighth grader ran off a different schedule than nine through twelve, staggered a little bit, so different break times, different bell times, they would change at different times and that.
I feel like that is confusing, that to have multiple bells.
It is, because the sample schedule, you know, is like a block A through G, but there were conversations about changing up to only blocks like A through D, and having those four blocks, so that would look like a very different day, so that's a question that I just have. Because I think that's a totally different setup for a ten-year-old.
But because, again, I, I don't have an answer.
On one specific subject.
I don't think there's an answer to that question right now, but, um, typically if it's four blocks, you could run two blocks within, two short blocks within the long-block schedule for grades or specific classes if you needed to.
Those kids would actually be eleven though, because my kid's one of the youngest and she's eleven.
Yes, sorry, eleven, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I did the same thing, I went, hang on.
All right, eleven.
But it is, it's still a lot, all of it's gonna be adjustment though, I mean, do you remember that first time that you-
It is, but I'll be honest, like, I remember going to ninth grade when we switched to that A through D schedule, it was completely different from a full schedule, it was a very different feel to sit in the-
This schedule in itself is like a little fancy ideal.
Well, yeah, to have gym, a PE, then a STEM, then an art.
Yeah.
That's what they do now, I mean, it's not-
A gym, a STEM, and an art, E, D, E, F, and G?
Yeah, Meredith has A, uh, A through whatever, whatever classes it is now, so she has, you know, social studies.
Seven-block schedule, yeah?
Uh, you know, she has all those classes in a day, so, you know, and, and it may not be, uh, she may not have, um, like a STEM and an art back-to-back, but she gets all of those things, like, she had last, and this was seventh grade, she had the forensics for half of the year, and then she had-
Design and planning?
No, that was another one, study skills the other half of the year, you know, so, some o, some options, so that, like, one of those might become an elective, but they do have the seven, seven full blocks, so. You know, I, um, it's so hard. So hard. Any other questions or thoughts?
Okay, you have a last question, if we're looking to, if sixth grade moves, and then we have the space for ch- and we're looking for two classrooms, right, like, that's, I'm still stuck on the last slide here, so just bear with me through this thought. We're looking for two classrooms, is that meaning that we want K to go to three?
I thought it was, we were bringing up, um, more preschool because of the numbers.
I guess-
I guess we don't know what the-
The only other option that was discussed as far as preschool is, would be ideal to have a full-day four-year-old program. Currently, we run three half-day sessions. In an ideal world, you would have a three-year-old room, and then a full-day four-year-old room. But right now, I think we, because of the three sessions, they're all half-day, but they still have two rooms. Correct, which, that's where I think, but I don't make the rules, should be a smaller pre-K over there, and you still have a classroom.
Well, I guess I was just trying to figure out-
Is it this last-in-room as a pre-K?
No, no. The lovely wall that I wanna build.
To go-
Because I can do construction.
To go way backwards though, and if the sixth grade moves, is that giving this current school two pre-Ks and then three K through sixes? I guess I need to like know that information, because right now, K is so small, I don't wanna repeat what-
You'd have to go on the map page, we do have-
I know the magic number is twenty-one.
Well, I think regardless, this building, because of the numbers, it's never going to be, I think we had discussed this at one of them, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this building is always going to be in a state of flux. But we're gonna, one year we might have to have three kindergartens and only one pre-K because of the numbers of kids coming in. And then the next year, we might have to have three P, pre-Ks and one kindergarten to make up for it, and one year we might have to have three sixth grades and one fifth grade, um, or, you know, like, but, honestly, I feel like historically, that's always been the issue in, I'll say, the elementary school. At, in my experience with both of my girls, K through six, the dynamic of, um, West Street and East Meadow, because my older daughter, she's a senior now, wasn't, she was the last class to graduate third grade from West Street, how that building was being used and how East Meadow was being used constantly fluctuated depending upon current enrollment. So there may have been two kindergartens, or there could have been, uh, at one point, right before her, kindergarten was only half-day. She was the first full-day kindergarten in Granby. So it's like all of these things fluctuated depending upon enrollment.
Well, we were the last year of two Ks, before they hired and did a third.
So to just be more direct in where I was going with this, is we have the enrollment dashboard now that we've been utilizing, which has been an enormous help, um, that tracks, you know, what our numbers are, who's coming in, out of the district. I don't wanna say that we're moving sixth grade to make room for that third kindergarten class that only has thirty-five to then still school choice, because I feel like that's a narrative being spun, that I certainly know that was not-
I didn't understand that's where you were going.
Sorry, that is where I was going, because it's so small.
We control as-
I would still not open up another room.
So what I'm gonna say is this, and I, 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 we control as a committee, and it's not just we, these five butts in seats, but this committee controls the school, school choice narrative. So, that's what we do every single school year, is we look at those numbers and determine in or out. So, because I, I had mentioned to Stephen, if we moved the sixth grade out, and now we feel like we have space, and if we, we create more school choice, we could very easily end up two more years from now, or three more years from now, now the fifth grade doesn't fit, or whatever, we have an additional capacity issue. And we're, we, that's not the point to, to move it down, like, it's saying, based on what we see now with these projections, to move the sixth grade, this bill, this building then becomes viable, and whatever iteration it becomes that it's necessary, whether it's one kindergarten, one pre-K, four first grades, one second grade, on and on, whatever, the magic number is twenty, twenty-one classrooms. That's what we have in the building, so, that's how we'll have to adjust it based on income.
Enrollment.
Incoming, not-
I get that, I guess, to go back to where we started though, that last slide showing the census numbers, which I know is just a projection, and seeing how small K is though, it's also in the back of my mind that in the immediate future, I feel like we need one room. And that to me is a very, is different, it creates that sense of urgency a little bit differently, eh, for me.
Where's the one room? Because our current K is thirty-seven, enrollment is thirty-seven. Next year we're projecting the census number's forty-one.
So that would be-
Still two.
No, no, yeah, no, they'd still stay in two rooms, I'm saying that we would only need one additional room right now, because we would, when sixth grade is two right now, but next year's sixth grade needs to be three, so we really need one additional classroom, if K stayed two. Do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So it's only that third year.
Correct.
That's fifty-two and then fifty-eight.
Mm-hmm. Well, uh, correct, and next year could be, but likely not, because that number's so much longer.
These are census, census numbers, so regardless of who goes to children first, they are-
Well, but there's still some unaccountable, unaccountable for.
There's forty-six in the census numbers for our current K, and we have thirty-seven enrolled.
Right, so we're never gonna be able to control that, but what we're saying right now is that there's, if there's fifty-eight, that's registered kids in Granby, so-
Fifty-eight, that's one-year-olds, twenty-two.
For the one, one-year-olds right now, so in, for four years or whatever it is.
Look at the one before that though, the fifty-two.
Okay, whatever, whatever number it is, so, if there's fifty-two there.
In two years.
Regardless of what, that's what we're saying is Granby residents, so it doesn't matter how many go to children first, because we still have to have room to accommodate our, our resident, our residents.
Right, but to that effect, like Stephanie's saying, forty-one, twenty-six, some of those go to children first, how many are you at? Maybe you only need one kindergarten in a couple of years, like-
And then you get yourself another extra room or two, to like keep that the same, and then even you need that bigger room, or bigger grade level.
Right, so, so that's where, you know, we've just, I feel like we, this committee has just gone a hundred and eighty degrees from where we were the last time.
No, I think it's just, it's just looking at all those angles that keep, we keep kind of just circling around back and forth to, because, I mean, I could literally make an argument for either.
And that's, and that's just it, like, today, some people that were making an argument in a different direction are coming out with some strong points, but counteracts their arguments from outside, so.
Or so you thought. Then it's even more frustrating though to make a decision, because if I'm saying I could flip-flop like that, I don't feel very confident in the decision, do you know what I mean? If someone else were making that decision for my child, and I'm hearing people say, I don't know, I could go either way, I personally would not feel very confident.
Well, that's why I'm asking if we're ready to make a decision-
No, I know.
On November first, because that has been, that has been the crux of this whole thing, is that we want time for the administration and the leadership to plan.
I will say this, for myself, I have been looking for information that would strongly lead me in one direction or the other to make a different decision, to kind of change in one way. If that information is not strong enough to push my decision in, in a different direction, then I guess that's where I feel like I'm kind of, that, I'm, I'm like, I'm in that stuck place, where it's like, I, if I don't have enough information to move from where I am currently, then maybe this is where I stay. And, and to be honest, like, that's, that's kind of where I am right now, it's like I see there's good information on both sides. I can see a point where I don't want to, you know, limit any students here, or cause any upheaval here at East Meadow for anybody. I can see valid points to where students would have a lot of benefit to being at the high school as well. But to make a drastic change, I need a lot of information as to like checking all those boxes, as to why you need to make that drastic change. And if all those boxes at the end of the day, if they're not checked, then for me, like, I don't know that I can make that final decision.
So, again, devil's advocate is the way, we had come out saying that we didn't wanna put a decision out that feels like it's being kicked down the road, because I, I had said at one point, if we move the sixth grade and this building appears empty, can we move them back? Can we have another vote? And again, this is the collective we of the whoever, whatever the committee looks like. And we're like, oh, we don't, well, we don't really wanna take that approach, we, you know, make a decision, we kind of want it to be for the long term. But then when we talk about these things, like this nu, this number-
Who makes that rule? Us. So I mean, like, not that you wanna be like, pull it this way, pull it that way, but like-
Disruptive to the, to the-
Correct.
To the teachers and the administration.
Agreed.
You know, so, that, I guess we're listening to them, like, we don't wanna be like, okay, right, isn't that what you had said?
Yeah, I would say the-
To do like a decision every year?
Like, a decision to keep sixth grade here, in some ways, continues this conversation down the road, potentially considering the numbers, a decision to move the sixth grade, I think, as you and I were saying, is like, if you move them, you really don't wanna move them there, then move them back, and then move them there, that, I think, becomes disruptive. So, a decision to stay, I think, is a fine decision for the time being. Again, we might get into some of those what-ifs that we laid out, we might not, but two years, a year down the road, we might be having this conversation again, and by we, I mean whoever's-
Whoever. I have a question that just kind of popped in my mind, is having this census information, like, as current, as available, on the enrollment dashboard, so then as we are checking in on it, when we do it monthly, how, you know, that when we're doing it, that's kind of, if it does get updated, it's there, um, as in like, oh, hey, look, how many upcoming potential whatever, four-year-olds there's coming next year, like, having that have a home on that enrollment dashboard too.
I will see what we can do in that, so I know we have the request, we, we requested this from the town, and we waited until September, so we had the, the August thirty-first cutoff.
Right, I know it'd be like a once-a-year update, but still, oh, right, it would most likely be once a year after the census is completed, but, again, it kind of draws your eye to it and reminds you to reflect on it and look at it and see it. Especially because you're looking at that for pre-K incoming potential too, right?
Yep, yeah, we talked about those three pre-K contests last time.
Right.
The three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and-
Once they hit two-point-nine.
Those would be three in September.
Yep.
All right, five more minutes, last questions, just to try to keep us, um, uh, focused. I'll ask again, November first, next meeting, are we comfortable for a vote, or do we want to have additional discussion? Again, more great discussion tonight. I appreciate everyone's candor, because I really do think it, it helps, you know, like, we're, there's so much here that it's good for everyone to be able to pick apart different things and express different opinions and have a great conversation. So I, I really do appreciate everyone's candor, 'cause I think it's, I think it's helpful. But November first.
I'm fine with it. Everyone's gonna be here?
I don't know yet, because my internship I was supposed to do now is to, but I'll talk to the boss, being an important meeting, I might be able to get off.
So, adding to the agenda, November first, um, will be the school capacity vote. And if, um, just so that it's clear, if, when we have our final discussion, if something earth-shattering has happened, we are not bound to, we, we can change the agenda. If it's, if it's more, then we're ready to do at that point because of whatever. It's, it's the goal, but I don't want anyone to be intimidated if, um, if they're not, if they're not ready. We can have a motion to table the vote until the next.
I don't know about you, but I almost feel relieved to have it happen, 'cause this has been on here a real long time.
I will, but I.
I will, no, I know, but you know what I mean? Either way, the more we put it out, like, it's.
Yeah.
We've had all the opportunity and, and some to ask the questions, which I really appreciate, and we've gotten really great feedback back. I don't wanna minimize, that work has been so good. I feel like the last year that we've worked together, um, I can confidently say it feels very different. So I definitely appreciate that.
A hundred, this is a much different conversation than when it initially balled out, a hundred percent.
No, I think everyone's been very open and very honest and asking good questions, and, you know, not everybody sees the same thing, and I think that's good, and, and I.
Well, we're all individuals, right? No one, no one is a, we're not saying.
No, and that's what's nice, too, like, through the explanation, someone might kind of give you a different viewpoint of it, too, and think of it a different way.
Um, and also, as a reminder, I know it goes without saying, we do not have to be unanimous on this, so be confident in whatever, you know, your vote is. And, um, this is one of those votes where we did it with Emery, and I need to brush up on it, but we voted twice on it to make sure that everyone was a hundred percent comfortable with their vote. We took a vote, and then we did, I, I think it's a confirmation vote. I've gotta look at the, um, what the right term is, but, um, that is an option for us as well. Um, I'm not saying that we need to do that, but it's something that's out there. Um, anything else on this before we leave? Uh, well, not leave, jump into that, leave this topic. All right, then, standing report.
So, just had a couple, just a reminder, um, I guess I questioned when I was writing this, why I do this now that we're not live, but a reminder that tomorrow, Wednesday, October nineteenth is an early release day for students. Um, staff has professional development, so students at the junior, senior high school will be dismissed at eleven, and students at East Meadow will be released at eleven forty. Um, did wanna let the committee know that the basketball court project is slowly underway, not slowly, it's actually moving pretty quickly, but, um, they're on campus, um, starting that work. I do recognize that we had talked about having some ceremony, um, once this is complete, and we anticipate it will be complete, um, before Thanksgiving, certainly. But, uh, I was thinking it might be best to plan something for the spring, so we could have a proper event. I don't know that people are in a rush to.
I know we all saw it through the RAM report, but did everyone else share, like, was there another official, like, sharing of what happened? As you're saying that, like, I feel like, do we need to word that, like, to fill in the back of story of?
Well, I think the story's been laid out across the meetings, that there was been an anonymous donation that gave us the money, but.
Okay.
Certainly, it, that doesn't go, uh, unappreciated, uh, that we had this anonymous donor.
Yeah.
Thank you again to that person.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, that, that's.
Awesome, yes. I just didn't think I had seen it, like, kind of, I know I saw it in the RAM report and then on whatever, so.
Maybe when we do the event, well, maybe we'll get, uh, G-CAM or something to come and cover it or pay for it.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Yeah, and I know, it's time to vote, maybe a fundraiser for a class, like a three-on-three basketball tournament or something, like, having some event or something around it. And, um, I think Ally felt like she wanted to do it because the committee wanted that to happen, and I appreciate that. I just felt like, trying to squeeze it into November and having it freezing out there is probably not.
It'll be nice in the spring to have it.
Do something in the spring, so, just so you know, that is on our radar, um, and something that we'll, um, we'll certainly share out and get some more information as the project progresses, and we'll get some pictures up on the website and things like that. Uh, Granby Public Schools are once again partnering with the Granby Police and Fire Departments to offer a trunk-or-treat event on Monday, October thirty-first. The event will be held in the East Meadow parking lot from four to five-thirty. Um, certainly, everybody is welcome to come to trunk-or-treat. You can only have a car if you've signed up, so don't show up that day. You can just decorate your trunk. Um, and looking forward to the principals' list dinner this Friday, September twenty-first, at the junior, senior high school. It's a great event to honor the academic achievements of our students. This year, there are sixty-eight students in grades eight through twelve being recognized for their academic achievement in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so looking forward to that this Friday evening.
Okay, I got a few things. One, uh, the end of your report is with Chrissy, reviewing it. Uh, once I have that back, we'll submit to the state, and that'll be, um, checked off completely on my list. Um, we're, myself and John are meeting with Dick from the Board of Health on Thursday. He's coming to the high school. Um, I think I told you guys about, we're trying to see if we can make some changes to the serving line in the kitchen. Um, so we finally got a date. It's first thing Thursday morning, he's gonna come.
What time first thing?
Eight-thirty.
I was thinking I might, I gotta see what my, uh, schedule looks like, I might try to pop in.
Okay, shoot me a text or this, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I'm meeting with him Thursday, just to kind of discuss that, um, pick his brain a little bit, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward with some type of modification to free up, uh, give Charles some breathing room. Um, we were notified that we'll get some additional USDA supply chain funds. We received these last year. Um, and it's, uh, last year, we got sixteen thousand, well, over sixteen thousand, to help offset the cost of supply chain disruption. Um, so we're getting them again this year. We just got the notification, we're not sure the amount yet, but as soon as I know what that is, I will certainly share it with you guys.
Are we still having, um, uh, Ken was saying he thought it was starting to loosen up a little bit, but is it still, um?
I, I mean, I haven't had those discussions yet, he hasn't brought that to me yet.
Okay.
I can follow up and see.
I thought you said at our last meeting.
Yeah, I think they said they were anticipating, you know, once we got to the fall, that we would see some.
Okay.
Um, he's good at letting me know if we're, if we're gonna have some problems or delays. I haven't gotten that, but I'll follow up with him and, um.
Sure.
And I can let you know.
Great.
And then lastly, this is sort of an unanticipated cost, um, sort of not, so our elevator at the high school, they, the state has passed some new legislation, and I'm gonna try not to butcher this, John really knows it, but right now, when there's a fire, elevators, I believe, when firefighters call for it, the door opens right away. There's a new, um, regulation put in that it only should open a little bit, so firefighters or emergency responders can see, essentially, what's going on in there. Because of that, we need a part to be installed on the elevator, that's eighty-five hundred dollars.
Say it again, how many?
Eight thousand five hundred dollars, yeah. Um, and this is like one of those, we talk about unfunded mandates or costs out of our, I mean, we can't use the elevator until this part is installed, right, so we essentially have no choice. Unanticipated, we can absorb it in our budget now, um, but just wanted to make everyone aware to change the state level for regulations, and we obviously have to comply.
And it's something, like Adam's saying, we can absorb it in our budget right now, but Adam and I are gonna work to set up a meeting with Chris to talk about the first quarter and some things that came up that were unanticipated, so they're on the town's radar. So if something else comes up, we might not be able to cover the elevator piece if we're covering this. So just so there's no surprises come the spring.
Um, I, I hate to ask.
Hmm?
Can I, are we back?
Yeah, we're still, um, we're, we're still having some reoccurring problems. I, David, you don't necessarily have to speak to this, but there's a couple out here that aren't talking to the police station that we hadn't had problems with prior, so there, there's something going on.
I was talking about the lightning strike cameras.
Yeah, the same, same, it, it's, the cameras.
It's not part of the same issue.
Not part of the same issue, but they are the same cameras, essentially. So we, we are, we have had vendor upon vendor here researching what's going on. Um, we don't have an answer, David, I don't think we have an answer. We just, we're, we're losing communication to the police department, we don't know why.
Yeah, it's not the same problem, it's, it, unfortunately, what happens is something breaks, it gets repaired, and everything is working fine for a while, and then something else breaks, and some of it might be weather-related, particularly if it's a camera that's outdoor that freezes up or ices over. Um, there's been some, some internal software things that, we corrected most of that, and that's where things were running fine. But the most recent issues Adam's referring to, I think, are the external, the cameras outside and, and, you know, climate things affecting the, correct?
Yeah, so we're working through that. Unfortunately, technology.
Yeah.
That's all I have?
November.
All right, um, so we have two major things on our agenda, voting on the school committee goals, and then, um, our school capacity vote for next time. If there's anything else, um, send us an email. Um, if there's no other comments, we'll vote to enter into executive session. I just think that Jack is not here, so do you do that? Okay. We're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part Eight-Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Ms. Bartos?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Balke?
Aye.
Shudek?
Yes.
This helps here.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.